Oh, she's, oh, this is just for her thing today. It's appeal board, right? That was one of them.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the council work session on August 21st. We have several items on the agenda. First up, Gloria Smith. We have an amendment.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Good.
Did you enjoy the eclipse? Okay. Moving right along.
You have a request before you to schedule on behalf of Chop Tank Electric. The Electric Cooperative developed a regional office in 2015 out on Wallston Switch Road.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I suspect you need the microphone. Yeah. You're doing an excellent job projecting.
Okay. That one's not quite.
No, you probably need to just pull it.
Swapping around. Okay. Okay, we'll start again. We have a request to schedule for a regular session for Chop Tank Electric. They developed a regional office out on Wallston Switch Road on a 40-acre property in 2015, and they are being served either water sewer or both through a pre-annexation agreement. And it's my understanding that the annexation is now in the pipeline to be processed for them to come on in and be part of the corporate limits of Salisbury. There is a definition already in the code for a public utility, but it is not as extensive as Chop Tank Electric would like to have to cover everything that they do out there to make sure that when they become part of the city, they're not automatically illegal, non-conforming use. I'm not sure that there's much else that I can tell you. We will make sure for the regular session that Mr. Hickson is here because he can elaborate much more than I can about how many counties Chop Tank operates in. They're mostly rural. He did explain to the commission at the commission's public hearing that this regional center duplicates some of the services that are in their main facilities in Denton. In the event a situation such as the tornado in Kent were to take the Denton office offline, the computer system and the telephone system in Salisbury could pick up and keep their operations going. So that's where we are.
Okay. And this went through the.
It has been, it has already been to the planning commission and has a favorable recommendation.
Great. Any questions? Okay. We have consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody from the chief's office here? Okay, we'll skip the second. We'll go right to the parking garage study. Jennifer? It's about the Explorer post. Yeah. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, everyone. We have our vendor here, Tim Hassan Associates. Mr. Noli Alarcon from the vendor. In the spring, the procurement department issued a request for proposals to complete a parking garage condition survey. The city was briefed on this survey in, at the end of May. I'm sorry, the presentation was in June, and then we asked that they come and present that same presentation to the city council. So I'm going to turn it over to Noli for the presentation. We'll be showing that up on the screen as well. Yes, thank you.
I'd have to least prepare to come do this if anybody wants to get.
But you're the pause.
If there's not a big on/off button on the front of it, I'm not real sure.
That's pretty sharp. Stay here, Keith. We may need you. There we are.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Again, I'm Noli Alarcon from Tim Hassan Associates, and I also have two members of my team from Alan and Shari, James Grove and Jack Booth, who helped me, who helped us in doing the presentations. I will ask them, I will ask you guys to make the comments as we go through the presentation. As Jennifer has said, we did the condition appraisal about three months ago and submitted a full condition appraisal through them. And now Jennifer asked me to highlight some of the, some of the highlights from the presentation to, for this meeting. I have done this before with the mayor, and this is the second time I'm doing exactly the same presentation. Before I do that, I might as well take this advantage to introduce our company to you, who we are and what we do. We are, we are an engineering architecture firm. We started in 95, so 22 years. And ever since that, we have designed about 750 parking structures totaling 20,000, a half million, half million spaces. And before that, the principal of the company, myself included, had worked with in-parking for another 10 years, so it's more than 30 years of experience. We have strong municipal experience, and we, over the last three years alone, we have designed more than 60 restoration projects. Some of them are, one of that restoration project is the Union Station parking, which I would assume everybody here has seen. It was in 2010, we were commissioned to expand the parking garage at that time. It was 32 years old at the time. Believe they built the garage during the centennial in 1980. And we did a pool architectural engineering services for that garage and doubled the, the size of that garage. If you look at the picture, the picture at the top is the before. That is in 2010. And five years later, we had expanded it and doubled the number. And ever since that, Union Station also commissioned us to do restoration on the existing garage. So to this date, we're still working on that, and the way we did it is we will pace the construction. What can we do? They, they will have fiscal funding for a year, and that's what we did. For this amount, we, you can do this and that. So I'm thinking that this might be the same thing that would happen to this parking garage right now. And this is what we have done to that garage. We did some signage enhancement, make it more inviting to users by adding signs and directional and waypointing. And this is, this is a list of the restoration project we have done over the last year. I mean, I will not go through each one of them. I'm just wanting to emphasize that restoration is what we do also. And we also do new garages, and these are some of those. I don't know if everybody has gone to Atlantic City. The first picture on the lap is the gateway to the Atlantic City. When you enter Atlantic City from the expressway, this is where you can park and you can be shuttled to the, to the, what do you call this? The gambling casinos. And one on the ride is the parking garage at the Amtrak station in Philadelphia. You can't miss it if you ride the Amtrak. We also did a parking garage for Penn and the Philadelphia Zoo. More garages, three garages from New Jersey and two garages from Miami. The, the one at lower bottom won the award of excellence from the Parking Institute. Now, let's talk about your project. Too many people here. Just in case, this parking garage was built in two phases. The original garage was built in 1976, and then it was expanded in 2002. I remember that because I did that presentation here. We designed the expansion in 2002. And that, your parking garage is four levels with two bay parking for over 700 spaces. It's a pre-cast structure with taptees for the original, and we use pre-taptees for the expansion. You have two separate stair elevator tower and two separate stairs, total of four for pedestrian movement. There is a partial basement with concrete retaining walls of the ground there. The parking garage is supported by deep foundation using timber piles for the original, and we use oak cuss piles for the expansion. And your parking garage is 90 to 100% capacity on a daily basis. We haven't checked it on the weekend, but that's good that the parking garage is so much use. At that time, we were commissioned. It is the, it is our understanding that the city is looking for a comprehensive structural investigation of the facility to extend the garage service life, minimize long-term maintenance costs, maintain a safe parking environment for the patrons, and during construction, minimize disruption if repair works are done and stay within the city limits. And this is what we found out. The parking garage as a whole is still in good shape, although there are some things that need to be done. And I will show here some of the things that are happening in your garage. You have T-stem spores, and some bearing pods are deteriorated. They need to be replaced. Four cracks, spores and the lamination on the concrete surface, driving surface of the parking garage. You also have some overhaul, overhead and vertical spores similar to the pictures and some concrete surface cracking and scaling, which is normally a product of a parking garage dissolved. Sometimes with parking garage, it's an exposed structure. The problem with concrete is when you design rainforest concrete, the, I don't know if you guys will understand this, I'm trying to say it in a layman's language. You design the concrete to crack so that the rain poisoning can take over. And in other buildings, you have ceilings and carpet cover the crack, so it's okay to crack. You can't do that in a parking garage. But as I said, it needs to crack for the rain poisoning takeover, so the idea is to minimize the crack. That's why we use pre-stress, pre-cast or post-tension cast in place. The idea is when it crack, it should not open very much so that you can seal it. And in some occasion here, I mean, this garage is built in 76 when the parking garage industry is just developing. Obviously, everybody learns from that. The parking garage construction exploded in the 70s when the automobile, you know, use of automobile in this country exploded, and everybody said we should be doing parking garages, and it has to be long span because cars are used. And everybody experimenting, we use this system, this system, that system. Pre-cast is still the best system. And from 76 to this, to now, at that time, your parking garage was designed probably for 40 years service life. Well, it's 40 years old now. Now we can design garages for 70, even 80 years. But the pack of the matters, this garage was built in 76, and it's doing a great job knowing that you already reached the service life of the parking garage. It has some drainage and weatherproofing issues. Minimal as they are, they are, we have water funding, and this can be easily solved. Expansion joint and two, two joint sealant repair and replacement. And I will let, Tim, you want to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you need to get, well, you can go there or to the podium and use the mic, as long as you have a mic.
My name is Jim Grove. I'm with Allen Street Engineering. I did the mechanical portion survey for this project. What we're looking at here is you have an existing CO monitor and NO2 monitor for the underground enclosed portion of the garage. Currently, we believe this needs to be tested to make sure everything's running properly. Also, throughout the facility, there's various air type air conditioning units installed, one in the office area, some in the equipment rooms. Some of those are through-the-wall P-TAC units. At this time, there are some, there have been some recent replacements of the through-the-wall P-TAC units and the installation of the new VR system in the office area, so we don't make any recommendations to replace those, just maintain servicing. However, in the lower right corner, you'll see that P-TAC unit has shrubbery in front of it. We want to maintain at least a foot clearance in front of that. If we don't allow the air to evacuate properly, it will decrease the service life of that unit. There's also several rooms in the lower portion that are enclosed, which you should have a ventilation system in place. Currently, that ventilation system did not operate while we were there. We need to have that checked out to make sure it can function. If it does not function, we need to put that back into working order. The exhaust for the restroom is in place. It exhausts out the south side of the building. There's no repairs that need to be done there. Currently, each stairwell is ventilated by natural ventilation through louvers in the side of the building and egg crates at the top stairwell, so you have air in and air out at all times. The restrooms for the, I guess, workers in the garage, they do not meet current ADA guidelines. We suggest if you do make renovations to the facility to bring the bathroom up to ADA guidelines. As you can see, the door hits the urinal now when you're in it. Also, the water heater has a relief valve and drain pan that would drip on the patron if it were to ever leak and/or relief valve go off.
I'll ask a question. Did we need a study to tell us that the bathroom, and shouldn't someone who worked there or the head of the department have come and said? Because I see Ms. Holland is, you know, writing furiously that there are things in the parking garage, and I'm just wondering why we needed a study commission to tell us that the bathroom wasn't ADA compliant?
I don't know that you needed a study to do that.
Well, I'm actually not asking you. I'm not asking you. I'm just, isn't that something that couldn't have just come through at budget time? I mean, the study's great, and I'm scorched, and we need it, and I think what we're really looking for is what's the final cost on decking and all that stuff? I didn't realize that there was something wrong with the bathroom or something wrong with air conditioning or shrubbery that needed to be cut back a foot. That's really not something that, that I need to know.
It's part, it's part of maintaining the parking structure.
If you'll excuse me for just a second, I'm actually speaking to the department.
I'm sorry.
Again, if there was a one foot of bush that needed to be cut back, how come someone isn't telling you that? I'm just, I'm just asking. I just, I see these pictures up here, and I'm like, it's not ADA compliant, but, and I know I'm the one who asks these questions, and that's why Ms. Holland smiles when I mention her name, but isn't that something that should have been handled internally?
Mr. Mayor?
If I may.
Yeah.
The only reason that this is being shared at council level is not necessarily the small things that need to be fixed that were identified here, but, but really the more costly things that will be discussed later on in the presentation and.
This is the one.
The structural issues. It's, it's a comprehensive look, and I guess this was, was this funded in 2015, FY15 or FY16?
FY7.
It was 17. So this is just coming to a close now, and it's going to predict and kind of give us a roadmap of what's to come. A couple of things. ADA, I mean, it, it should comply and all that. However, it doesn't have to. I mean, this is a 1970.
It will, it will. It will when you do renovation.
It's grandfathered, so it doesn't have to comply, but, you know, it's a good idea for it, right?
Absolutely.
And then the smaller things are mostly, you know, again, management can take care of them, you know, and we will. Some things are already being addressed, so some things were identified right away, and Tom Stevenson's team went into maintenance mode immediately, but.
Are any of them these?
Yeah, some of these. So they're just being shared tonight because it's a, you know, the full presentation, not edited for, you know, or not reduced significantly for council consumption. I hope that's okay.
If we get to a point where, you know, something has been fixed on this list, could you let us, could you let us know?
Yeah.
Between the time that we got this study and now, parking has not been under my purview. It's been under, the maintenance has been under field operations. So if they or the mayor or the executive office is privy to some of those things that have been done or are in the pipeline, they would know better than I do.
We can get an, we can get an update just to see where they, you know.
I'm working on getting details right now.
Okay.
Continue.
Yeah, then we'll come back when you get to the end.
Okay. As Noli said earlier, there are various drains in the top and throughout each level that drain the rainwater away from facility. However, there are ponding areas where small drains may need to be added to prevent the spaulding and future concrete deterioration. Fire protection, you have a dry system throughout the facility, and it also does the office area. At this time, because it is an open parking structure, you do not have to fully sprinkle, sprinkle the garage. However, it is, you know, routine maintenance to check the fire systems each year. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Chuck, my partner, for his electrical observations.
Thank you.
Hello, as Jim said, my name is Chuck Booth, and did they like the portion of this? Basically, going through the parking garage, an assessment of the overall condition of the power, lighting, distribution panels in the basement. As you start off with that, there's panels in the mechanic room in the basement, which seem, right now, seem to be adequate in use. And only, I don't know, was some rusting on the exterior of the panels, which is very minor, but you have some areas where there's still some older fluorescent lighting, the T-12s. It's not a lot, but there's some. And also in the stairways have T-8 lighting. There's options that you can, you know, upgrade those to LED to cut down power consumption. You do have receptacles in certain areas that don't seem to be GFI protected, and they're exposed to exterior areas, as you can see on the brick wall. And that, in the entire parking garage, I only noticed one GFI receptacle. And these receptacles aren't on GFI breakers, so therefore, that one breaker's not going to feed all the receptacles. So by deduction, they're not all protected by GFI.
Is there a panel GFI?
The panel wouldn't, no. You wouldn't trip out a whole panel and shut everything down because of one receptacle or one circuit. So, uh, that's. Although, they're just seem to be an optimal condition. Smoke detectors being, seem to be installed on both floors as required by code. Did a lighting walk-through, and every area but one met the lumen, foot candle requirements. So there's probably one area that needs to be addressed. It's probably just a photo cell that's not quite working correctly. It's probably another minor issue, but it is currently dark in one, one location mentioned on our report. There are a number of emergency lights that just by age, the batteries aren't functioning, bulbs aren't functioning, that need to be gone through. Exterior lighting, one observance is on the exterior of the building, there's no emergency lighting path egress, or no lighting, lighting the emergency path of egress, which should like extend down that, that railing. And because if loss of power occurs, you're probably going to lose the streetlights that light the outside of the building as well. You're probably on the same transformer. And now we're back to concrete, but that was basically my assessment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
As part of the condition appraisal, we also recommended that we do concrete testing because just like a doctor, if you're sick, you need to see a doctor, maybe see inside you what's really strong. So what we did is we had the concrete tested, and we found out that the overall condition of the concrete's still good despite being 40 years old. 95% of its design strength's still there at this point in time. There's some carbonation issue at the pre-cast that's susceptible to still corrosion, but it's in the bottom part of the old, old portion of the garage. And the thing is, it's not really that exposed, the bottom part, it's the top part that's irradiated, that shows chloride ion levels, showing, revealing lower risk of corrosion. That's why the garage's not really corroding very much on the top there, on the top floor of the garage. You also had the traffic membrane, which is not that old. I believe it's two, three years old. We tested that, and it seems to be bonded very well. There's minor issues here and there, but nothing to be worried about. It's very small. Maybe I meant it to be small because this, this is showing the, what we estimated for this. Remember, this is the structural portion, the little things that about replacing bathroom and things like that, we didn't include it here. What we included is things that we thought you should be fixing or, just like a sick person, the more, the more you wait, the more the issue becomes problematic. And we subdivided it into phase one. Phase one is things that need to be done within the system. Phase two is year two, and phase three is things that need to be done between year, year three and year five. This is to, to get your garage to be performing well for the next 12 to 15 years. And I'm, we're showing that that phase one would be construction cost of 300. We have to include general condition and contingency. The contingency is where you can make decision if there's additional that things to be, that can be, can be fixed at that time. That's why we, we haven't done the construction document yet, so we have to assume a 20% contingency on destroyings. And total cost with sub-cost, meaning engineering, testing, inspection, year one will be $472,000, Year two will be close to $600,000, and year three through five is $200,000 close, no, or a total of $1.25 million over a five-year period. close. No, or a total of 1.25 million over a five-year period. Again, this is, this is what we are recommending to make the garage perform well, better. I mean, we can make adjustments as, once we actually start doing the actual survey and measuring the areas. And I also, I also did another way of doing this is bring it on a yearly basis over a 15 period, 15-year period. This is where your other maintenance costs are included. And I have to guess, where are you replacing your, your deck coating at the top tier? When are we doing sealant on the typical tier? I just assume certain dates where we're going to do the sealants and certain days where we're going to do the, the deck coating. I assume that deck coating will be good for 10 years. So it's three years old now, maybe year, year five, year six or year seven, you're replacing it again. It doesn't need to, if you maintain, the thing with parking garage is if you maintain it properly, some of these things last longer. And sometimes, all it takes is if you wash it down, I mean, how many times you get snowy?
A couple times, do you?
Yeah, but the streets are salted, right? Roads salted. That's the problem. So during a snowy weather, all you have to do is once the weather turns better, just wash it down. We, I believe we provided a hose be, a water line in the garage. All you have to do is, if you can water, we always say, I always say this to my client, if you can water your garage three or four times a year in lieu of not doing it, it goes a long way from protecting your garage because it takes away all the, also of course, it needs to be drained also. So, and this is another way of doing it, I said, over a period of, over a 15 period of time. This includes maintenance now, whether you replace bathroom, you replace electrical, mechanical. And you can see, the first year again is 420, 27,000 dollars, which is assuming that you're doing a repair on the first five years and then it goes after that. Year seven's big because that's when I assume that you're replacing your deck coating, but it doesn't need to happen that, that way. It, I mean, it, it will all depend on the condition of that coating at that time. I just have to assume that you're replacing it. I'm picturing a, a more often pessimistic view here, so everybody's ready for it. It may not happen that way.
I'll ask the, the question that everyone else doesn't want to ask. If you, if you look at the combination of the 15-year plus the repairs of 1.25, what would it cost? Because you said the technology has significantly improved. What's the cost if you want to replace it roughly?
Today, 700 space garage. How, how beautiful do you want the garage to be?
I want it to be able to hold cars.
Yeah.
And fit it with this, the cityscape.
In this area, I'll give you, I mean, it's not an ugly garage, but it doesn't have the, I said, I mean, 15,000 for space, 10 point, 10, between 10 and a half to 11 million dollars to replace it. 700 space. I think it's more than 700.
714 spaces.
I can get you a nice looking garage.
For 12 million?
That's, that's construction.
Well, let's talk about the bathroom first. We do something we can do today.
Let's get back to the bathroom, please.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, these things are much better than having to replace.
The, the industry is often talking about 20,000 space now. So you're talking about 18 million?
How about we just buy one car to drive along?
Well, the best scenario for you is to build a garage somewhere and then when this is ready to be dismantled, your new garage is open. Now you can re, reassign this area for something.
On the, Mr. Council President, on the previous page, when you have the concrete overlay repair, you have a box over there on the left-hand side that's clear, just to the left of all of them. Is there any way possible that we could get you to rank them or rank them for the mayor with, sometimes it's an easy fix that's cheap, sometimes it's a quick fix that's really expensive.
Yes.
I was just wondering if we might be able to, as budget time comes, because this is probably where you put it unless, unless, you know, just for, for everyone's, this is, these are the easy things you can do right away. These are the harder things that are going to be a little further down the line. Or this is a huge thing that you need to do right now. I'm hoping to walk out of here today with, with the thing in everybody's mind, that the garage is in good shape. The money that you've spent on it over the last couple of years, especially with the, I can't remember the word, but there was a word, the, that's what you do a pool, to call?
Relining.
The lining, the relining, that's going well. The concrete is performing well. And what we've gotten out of this meeting and what, what the mayor has gotten out of this meeting is, this is the list of stuff you've got to do over the next five years, 10 years. This is really the order that you, that's, as a consultant, I'd be hoping that that's what you would say to us, or to, to the department. This is what you need. This is the lowest, this is the low hanging fruit. This is the high hanging fruit. This is what we, this recommendation.
Basically, if you look at the table, under phase one, there's only three items under concrete slab repair.
Okay. So those would be the top 30?
Yeah, that would be the top three. But then again, there's also like, let me get you a scenario. I have bearing, bearing part replacement of 200,000, there's 100. Obviously, we counted what we thought it will be and then rounded it. So it may not be 100, but we, we made sure that it's, it's not, it's not more than 100. Chances are it's less than that, but we have to cover our bases. So there is, it's not 100, it might have been 97. I'm not going to show you 97. I might as well round it to 100. But then.
Mr. Council President, is this where you want us to ask questions about what a T-stern repair is and things of that nature you want to weigh?
No, I, I think, I, I think what, what we need to, I think from, from my perspective, what we need to do is make sure that the safety, safety thing is taken care of first. And then we, we, we give that direction to the mayor and let him go do his, his thing. Let the operations people handle it.
Phase one is mostly safety first.
Right.
Because we have people on the top of the garage all day today, so I'm assuming it was safe for them to be there. That, I think, that's the story. You were up there and everything.
Well, that's, that's, that's the bit of concrete. This is when concrete wants to fail it, it's telling, it's cracking, it's starting to settle. It's not progressive for that.
That's what's happening in May, progressive collapse.
I'm already pissed.
Mr. President, I, I guess what I would say is although this is, you know, a really, you know, detailed presentation, the one thing I got out of our much longer conversation when, when we met was a sense of sequencing and what each year was going to look like. And, you know, the, the only thing that I'd say that we have to contend with, you know, come next budget season, is that looking forward a few years, it's, it's not exactly sort of a level expense in order to do the things in the right order. So, you know, we'll have to contend with that parking fund budget and the expense side. And, and recognize, I think, at times, if revenue and expense on parking fund may not pan out without some support from the general fund, if we're going to take care of this garage like we know we need to. So I would just ask for cognizance of that as we start to plan for the repairs over the next few years. You know, it's not huge expenditures when you compare it to what we've done over the last 20 years for the parking garage. We've had to do things just like this and get on cycles. This is, but this is a necessary moment to say, where are we at? And, and I do think it's also worth reminding everybody that we're probably looking at, you know, a period of time that we're going to spend some money to make sure that this thing is safe until we decide it's end of, you know, the end of life. And we, we really do make that decision to move on from this building. Because, you know, it's not, it's not going to last forever.
Yeah. So I, I guess with, with, with this, and you're, and you're, you're expecting to add 15 years to the life of, from, from about from when they complete the, the project, which gives us time to say, you know, we can assess it again. And if we do other upgrades, you know, maybe we can get more, maybe we can't. And then that gives the city time down the road, thinking, you know.
Yeah, there, there will come a time when, yeah, you can still do it, but is it worth? Because now you're spending more than getting it replaced.
Well, if that number of 95% was 60, we'd have an issue.
Right. Does the amount of, and this is going to be a very odd question. We have a lot of cars that park on the bottom, a lot of cars that park on the second one, fewer cars that park in the third one. More than.
It's starting to change.
It's starting to change. But if, if on that top floor, in the last 10 years, it's only had 15 or 20 cars on it, except at big events, do the number of cars on top of concrete affect it or is there something else? No? Okay. Well then, it could last a lot much longer, you know? I mean, you would, you'd think.
Except for we're running out of permits for it. That's something we need to talk about.
Well, that's okay. That, you know what?
Future discussion.
That's a good thing.
Well, there are, there are good aspects to that. Can I just share real quick some, some of the things that have happened since the report? So Tom Stevenson and, and Ben Baker and others were in the room, Al Vitelli, were in the room when this presentation was given. So they've made a few minor improvements, including some, some additions to the repainting, which do some color coding to match the floors. Elevators have been certified since then. Fire extinguishers have all been checked since then because there was, I think there were some fire extinguishers that were out of certification. Ventilation improvements, and I don't know which rooms that's to, because I think there were a couple rooms where there were some ventilation issues. And they're working on some lighting improvements. And I know that was, that's been identified as an issue. That's it. Some minor.
The GF, the GFIs would be an easy fix too.
Okay.
Well, the numbers we're, we're showing is mostly structural things that needs to be, to make the garage healthier.
Okay.
And again, our current services is doing the condition appraisal, providing you a report and optional services to do the design for the restoration, then construction administration. You, you want me to go through this and finish the presentation or? Because it's just going to how you want to deliver it because it's just things that you have.
No, I think that.
No, it's fine.
Just take that.
Yep.
Okay.
Is the project, can we, that, all right. So the project delivery, that's the one I'm looking at right now.
Right now, we, we finished the first bar.
Right. So if we're ending up bidding things, the comment would probably be in the next, whatever it is in this budget.
But we'll start, the CIP process is already started.
Yeah.
Like as soon as you stop one thing, the next one begins.
So the, so the ADA compliance and the, and I'm all the way down. My computer doesn't tell me. It's a little, it's a couple things further down. And that lighting thing, is that something we're all going to just do?
Yeah, some of those things we can just do. There's, we can find the money. Some things we already have.
And we'll have more detailed discussions during the budget, budget area.
Yeah, you can expect that we'll start to integrate all of this into the budget issue.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for letting me do this.
All right. We will go back and we'll now hear about the explorers program. Colonel, you're up.
Remich?
Yes, how are you?
Too bad. I'm taking a much needed and much deserved vacation.
Yep.
So, purpose of this meeting is to discuss the MO, entering into the MOU with the Boy Scouts, to, to actually restart an SPD Explorer program that was around some time ago. And I'm on my 30th year and this was before I was at the police department. So it goes back a ways. And we were actually able to get the same Explorer post number, 710, which was still available, which is kind of interesting. And if you want me to go into, I don't know, filling in for the chief, so I don't know if she's gone into detail as far as what the floor program is, what it does, if you want to talk about that briefly. The purpose of this was actually just to enter into the MOU with the Boy Scouts to actually start the Explorer program back up. Would you like me to discuss the floor program?
If, does everyone understand what the Explorer program is? Or would you like to hear a little bit?
I would like to hear a little bit.
I'm not conversant with it. Could you?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Could you let me know?
Yes.
Sure, absolutely. So it's actually through the Boy Scouts of America. And as it pertains, it's not necessarily police specific.
It's also fire.
Right. Actually, and it's actually, it could be, there's other entities like such as the hospital, different businesses could have an Explorer program that, and the whole goal really is to just connect with the youth. And this, this particular program would target middle schoolers of sixth, seventh and eighth grade. And what it would do basically is they would come in and we would have our staff train them and teach them in certain areas that we feel would be healthy for them. And certainly nothing that puts them in harm's way. But we would teach them different things about being a police officer, different life lessons that there, there we teach them how to do some things that mainly our cadets with our new cadet program would probably do. And that's learning about the city, different crime patterns that we have, how to do surveys, community surveys such as crime prevention, things like that. We, they may go out on some bike patrols. There's a whole slew of activities that they could do. And I can go into a few just to, mainly it's talking about crime prevention. They have other variety of law enforcement services, other community services. They would enter into some firearms training. So we teach them firearm safety. Basically, hold them accountable also to certain things as far as attendance goes. Teach them that the, what it's like to be, you have to show up on time for something, to maintain a schedule, hold, hold them accountable for certain things. And so that's the whole idea. And then eventually, perhaps some of these folks would have a better understanding of law enforcement and, and also perhaps in the future become a police officer, if not with Salisbury, but with maybe another agency. So that's really the main goal, is really the purpose is to develop a relationship with those youth and that would continue on through their adult age and hopefully, hopefully make them a member of the team at some point, at least some of them.
Thank you.
One, one thing I haven't heard the Colonel say yet, and I know from myself being an Explorer many years ago, is that men and women both are in, not just the boys in this.
Correct, correct. It's certainly not specific to the boys.
I, I would also say that coming up, I think it's the 31st, there's an event where there's a couple city departments being represented, police and fire, an interest meeting where their, the Boy Scouts are explaining more of this and offering more opportunities for.
Yeah, I think the goal is maybe start with us. And they are very interested in branching out other than just police. I mean, it can be anything. It could be public works. It could be any entity of the city where some of these kids have an interest in perhaps learning more. And it would certainly, they would still learn the same things as far as responsibilities, showing up on time, some of the things we talked about. And, and it also would connect us with those youth to perhaps down the road, you know, not just necessary police, but any entity of the city that they might be, have an interest in there.
And it doesn't require a membership in their organization either to participate?
When I was a Boy Scout, I actually participated in the firefighting explorers and led me to become a volunteer for years. It's an excellent program. I think, I think also it gives an opportunity for the youth to interact with police officers in an area that's not where they don't encounter them in a negative situation, but a very, very positive situation. So I think it's a great idea. Any other questions? Consensus?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Next item on the agenda is mobile vendors licensing.
So not to have Kordakowski written on the paper.
I can, or I can join you.
Right here.
I go here and she gets to sit over in the corner.
Spotlight is on you.
Oh. Do you want me to start? Yeah. Okay. We thought that it would be a good idea to separate the chapter 532 hawkers, peddlers and transient merchants into two chapters, transient merchants and mobile vendors and door-to-door solicitors. Mainly because Laura's department is in charge of business, business development and highlighting the businesses and, and those that are coming, attracting things to downtown and working with the festivals and whatnot. So she would have the opportunity to let these folks know who come into us, who we sometimes pull up the websites and search around for things that they can do. who we sometimes pull up the websites and search around for things that they can do to enhance Salisbury. We tell them about Third Friday, and the parking play, and such, but Laura has more of an opportunity to help their businesses, which helps us, and it just makes sense to us. We're proposing this, we're proposing keeping in the clerk's office the door-to-door solicitors. There's only two this past year that we've had, there've been fourteen.
Mobile vendors.
Mobile vendors, which consist of either homemade clothing or food, most of them are food. But the two door-to-door, you know, one was the wreath guy at Christmas, the other, he was a young man who wanted to go door-to-door selling wreaths. And the other one was Vivint solar panels.
Vivint, but not an energy company coming around door-to-door?
Not, but we have had those in the past. Yes.
I have, there's one that knocks on my door all the time.
Really?
Have you asked?
They like walk through the neighborhood.
Have you asked?
They don't, they don't come to my door anymore, because I banned them from my property.
The code seemed to be a little antiquated when it comes to the discussion of food trucks. You know, the word hawkers and peddlers seems to, it's a little antiquated, for sure. So, the idea is that we would break out the door-to-door solicitors, the more hawkers and peddlers, and then the food trucks.
Yeah.
And I would take the food trucks, and Kim would still handle the door-to-door solicitors.
And Mark, Mark has looked at this, and proposed to keep transient merchants and mobile vendors as the business development part of the, no, chapter, actually, that chapter. But to keep transient merchants, which we haven't had in years, but that would be a merchant that takes a location like a hotel room and sells jewelry, or whatever.
Got really quiet in the hall.
So was that in addition?
What you're doing help you do, because hawkers and peddlers, as I just said, in Maryland, sounds like milk house and horse-drawn carriage.
It certainly does.
It's not.
Mobile vendors is better.
Is the problem that we're not sure who we're going to, it's easy if you're doing the vendors downtown, but it's a little different when people are coming and saying, I wanna go door-to-door.
That's why.
Nobody who knocks on my door to give me several of the things that people like to give me, I can't imagine they stopped by your office and asked for a peddler's, or is that a hawking?
There's some, there are two, in the past year, who have come and wanted to actually go door-to-door. And all of them require a background check, you know, be done by the Police Department on anybody who will be working for them. We used to have, in years past, magazines, people wanted to sell magazines, and if they had twenty people working with them, they had to each be okayed, they had to have a background check. And we feel strongly that should be required.
If they're going door-to-door?
Yes, and if they're not from Maryland, they have to go to their state and get a background check done, and they bring that to us, and we send that to the Police Department to be verified and ultimately approved.
What's the fee for that? For the background check and all that?
It's included in the application fee, right now twenty-five, it's gonna be fifty.
So, is twenty-five dollars, does that cost, does that cover the cost of doing a background check?
No.
No, I would tell you no.
So, maybe another thing we could do is have Mr. Corddry do an analysis on the cost for background checks, because part of the idea for fees and everything is that they balance what we ask our staff to do. So, I think that might be something as well to look into.
And the other part of that discussion is, I understand including that for the door-to-door,
is that something that the council would like to include for mobile vendors and transient merchants? So that's up for discussion as well, Kim and I.
What's the question?
Whether we wanted to continue background checks on the mobile vendors.
Right.
Definitely.
I think.
Just think of the ice cream man.
Yes.
I mean, you do not want someone selling ice cream.
I mean, we've got, they come through my neighborhood.
There might, in some fashion, you're gonna wanna do that. Because you're talking about a lone vendor with a vehicle out on the streets, bringing in children.
I think this is the appropriate time maybe to ask this question, I have a concern that, I have nothing against mobile vendor food trucks, let me go on and say that. I do have, I do have a concern and an issue with the relative closeness to established.
We can address that.
Okay.
We've actually.
We have addressed that.
Yeah, we've addressed.
I understand that we have, there's one, you're only allowed one within a, for a certain period of hours during the day.
Yes, and that is a handshake, well, not a handshake deal, it's a little more formal than that, but interested food trucks have been going to Kim in the past, they've been getting their hawkers and peddlers license. If they're interested in setting up downtown, they have to get on the schedule with D. There's, I think it's from ten to three, they are allowed one day a week on this side of North Division Street, and they are required to pay the parking ahead of time for two spots.
And D's, D's in charge of that?
Yes.
Okay.
You know it's good.
She has.
She's the expert in hawkers and peddlers.
She's been billing them in advance, so it is something we're very sensitive to, and we've, we've realized there's been a few issues in the past, but we are doing our best to stay on top of that and keep the businesses happy as well.
I'll tell you, you know, having had this conversation at MML several times, at MML conventions several times with other towns, they've seen, you know, us talk about mobile food trucks here. In most communities, or in many communities around here, it's led to major fights in town. Somehow, we've gotten blessed, and it's not led to major fights, but when you have a situation where somebody disrespects a brick-and-mortar restaurant, it could lead to that, so we've been really blessed. And as a matter of policy, and Laura has implemented this policy in partnership with D, you know, this policy saying, hey, here's when you're allowed to be here, here's where you can set up, here's the hours, here's the proximity, but if they start to disrespect that, you better believe, you know, I think we're gonna be asking council to create law that's enforceable, because the policy's working so far, but if it comes to a point where they disrespect it, we'll definitely need the laws in place.
Yeah, I think we owe that to the people of brick-and-mortar, and they, you know, have made a commitment.
I don't think we need it yet.
Is there anything we could do as we get to sections three and one of the Main Street Mastermind? Is there any place we could designate? I can remember once saying, let's, I mean, we talked about the parking garage, right outside the parking garage, for that street didn't have a whole lot, but there was a, who's gonna walk that far? And I was like, well, for six tacos, you need to walk that far, you know what I mean? But is there a way, take a look at that with, with Public Works, is there any way, is there any place we could?
I mean, there's.
Congregate them, you know, like in DC, if you're going past the museum, there's a spot.
One of those, I know that there's people parking some of those parking spaces down there, a little further on Market Street, where there's like a little pavilion down there, you know, an area like that where maybe they could, they could get their food and sit at a picnic table, I mean, I know they do it here, but if they have another area where other food trucks could be, because what provides choices, I mean, you know.
There's a couple spots like that, I'd also say, you know, in our budget, we've got like seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for streetscape improvements this year, for Circle, Camden, and North Division, like those streets right there by the Harton Garage. So, I would say maybe there's even an opportunity in the design there to create some spaces for them to park. It could be right next to the parking garage even, or right across the street from the parking garage. Or on top of the parking garage.
Yeah, rooftop.
Rooftop dining.
Yeah.
Rooftop dining.
Yes.
All right, now.
But this stuff, these things will make your lives easier, more explainable, and better communicating with the public that's coming in for these things.
I think it's a shoo-in, because I do have that pulse on the downtown businesses, and also the food trucks and the events, like Kim said, so it's easy for me to kinda gauge their sensitivity and report back. So, it seems to make sense to me.
Me too.
Okay.
Did we wanna talk about hours?
We can do that.
The legislation states hours, and I saw what was submitted limits the mobile vending to nine to six PM, nine AM to six PM. Food trucks, that seems a little early to end.
Well, how do they, like, at the special events, how do they?
Yeah.
Because that's after six o'clock.
Yeah.
Special permission.
Yeah, they get.
This is what's in the current law.
Extended.
Yes.
And it allows it to be extended.
Oh, okay.
By special written permission, but if we wanted to remove that, is what I was thinking, that was something that I had proposed to you guys.
You could have food trucks selling dinners.
Yeah, that's, so I was thinking nine to nine.
That's reasonable, I mean, I think it was dealing with the door-to-door solicitors.
You want someone.
Yeah.
It was tying it all into the one chapter, which it should not.
Yeah, because of door-to-door, you don't want people coming to your house.
At least nine o'clock, I mean, if you've got a festival, you know. Of course, with the festival.
For the food trucks, it's not an issue, because very few of the places are open, I mean.
You don't wanna, that's gonna be a separate chapter.
Four o'clock, don't come to my door.
Is six o'clock to four, door-to-door?
No, four.
I'm glad they don't put those restrictions on us now.
No, but see, for five o'clock, we're eating dinner, that's dinner time.
Yeah, dinner is not a good time to come around.
Nine, nine to four.
Yes, because dinner time isn't like, five o'clock, most people eat dinner at five, and if they work at five, the vibe wants to be.
I mean, I agree, I wouldn't want anybody coming, who don't have a dinner time.
Typically, maybe seven, eight o'clock home. But then if we say four, then are we sort of effectively saying, don't knock on doors, because who's home during those hours, when most people are home?
Well, you can say nine to four. Okay, there are people home from nine to four, but if a person has been working all day.
Yeah.
You might leave a leaflet or something on the door, letting them know you're not coming.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not a proponent, I don't want them knocking on my door, I just have that impression.
Yeah, I mean, and if they wanna get in contact with you, that's fine, or whatever, but not, I'll just, I'll say nine to four.
Can we think about that one?
The hawkers?
Yeah, I didn't realize we were gonna.
I'm okay with the vendors, the food trucks and stuff, that's okay.
Nine, nine. All right.
I think that's fine.
But the door-to-door.
Door-to-door, that's another whole issue.
I would say nine to four.
But I'm not sure how you could conceivably say to somebody trying to sell something, I know there are people who are home, but there are more people who are at home by six o'clock. And if you get into, you want them to be successful and sell, but you don't want them to bother anybody at dinner, and I don't think anybody wins that battle. I think no matter what you do, having to chase by dogs, now they come knocking on your door now. I don't know how you.
Just put it in the door handle.
Right.
I mean, even if it's up until seven, where typically that's, you know, in the wintertime, that's usually dusk.
We have.
And that's when we don't, that's when the park rules are dawn to dusk.
I would just say, we're gonna ask people not to knock on their door after four, but our noise ordinance doesn't take effect till eleven, and I'm not exactly sure there's two.
Yeah, but we have a problem, we're running for office, and we're going out knocking on people's doors, they're like.
Honestly, to be honest with you, Kim, all the people that have knocked on my door are not those two groups of people, so I'm not.
And I think there's something that we need to start educating the public more on the door-to-door sale.
Although I have to say, after our discussion about the newspapers being everywhere, that's cleaned up something amazingly, if my favorite, so maybe just discussing something like this gets everybody back on the page if they want.
And understand that a violation, if you're not registered, it's a thousand-dollar fine. Kim will gladly issue you that thousand-dollar fine for not being registered. Will gladly accept a payment, too. Yep.
You're hawking now.
No, he's hawking.
I'm just educating the public.
That's happening.
Okay, any other questions, or? I think it's a good idea, makes sense. Consensus? Okay.
Cool, thank you.
You got it. Thanks very much.
Four o'clock.
And get a cost analysis on the background check, so that we make sure that we're.
We're gonna think about, we're gonna go.
That we're covering the costs with the fees.
Thinking about the hours.
So, I'll bring that information.
Well, I think this law also exempts people who have made advance appointments with you, so if you're contacted and you agree to someone coming to your house at seven PM.
That's a difference.
This is the unsolicited knock.
Yes, yes.
Okay, we do have a request, which I will grant, for Carrie Bunting. Carrie, you have something you'd like to discuss with us, so why don't you come on?
Thank you very much. For our meeting to speak, and I do have materials for everyone. As Mr. Keith said, my name is Carrie Bunting, and I am not a Salisbury city resident, I do live in Willard. However, I currently have, I'm gonna be speaking before the Wycomico County Council September fifth, and I am speaking with the Worcester County Council in the same proposal as well. So, I'm trying to blanket the whole shore with this, and I am proposing a balloon release ban in the city of Salisbury, and then, of course, hopefully, Wycomico County, Worcester County, Ocean City, Maryland, and Baltimore City currently already have ordinances against balloon releases. And a lot of times balloons get lumped with sky lanterns, think Chinese lanterns. In 2013, the entire state of Maryland, Maryland Fire Marshal banned the release of sky lanterns. So that is already a done deal, no, no release of lanterns in Maryland. But as you can see from the first picture, it's not only the balloons, it's the strings attached to them. We are an aquatic ecosystem in this area, our birds, our turtles, our fish are getting killed every single day by these releases. You know, the first thing that hits me is it's littering, there's already a law against littering, that's in your packet, the Maryland City Law Litter Control Law, it does not specifically say balloons, but it is something that is being released. And if you, oh, there's too many topics for me to think about, but there's two different kinds of balloons, latex and Mylar. Most releases are latex, which some are being labeled now as biodegradable, still takes several years. And honestly, the ones that land on the ground really aren't the issue, it's the ones that get eaten by the turtles, the ones who strangle the birds, so the biodegradable really is a moot point, because it's the ones that are killing our animals that are causing the problems, and the Mylar ones are the shiny ones, the metallic ones. I also, on the back of the first page, gave you several links to online articles where Mylar balloons have been released, hit power lines, and caused major power outages, as well as sparked fires, because it is metal. So metal is hitting the power lines, so it's a very big danger. And the picture on the top of that can show you how easily a busted blue balloon can look just like a jellyfish that is the natural prey of the turtle or some fish. So, we're killing our wildlife, which we live a lot of life here on the shore, we're all aquatic. And so I gave you the ordinance citing specifically stating that balloons are not to be released in Ocean City. It's actually listed twice, you can't have them on signs, as they'll escape, or be physically released. And a lot of these ordinances that already have been passed. And a lot of these ordinances that already have been passed, passed by entire states or smaller municipalities refers to large releases. You know, if my kid accidentally released, accidentally lets one go without the rest of the kid, it, it's mass releases that, that this, these bans are targeting. And I've listed several states and cities who have already done it and the restrictions. So there can be, you know, instead of not just a whole blanket ban, you can have video secretaries to it based on your, your constituencies and your environment.
Is that Mr., was then on the Ocean City, um, law that you've attached? If we could get Mr., um, Tillman, ooh, to see if he could get, I just drew a blank there. If you could, from Ocean City, get the legislation, because I'd like to see the wherethes, how they worded, cause I mean, I, if it were me, I'd just put Carrie Bunting from Willard said, whereas Carrie Bunting from Willard said, we should do this.
I did contact.
But it's gotta be a little bit more specific than that, and I'd like to see how they wrote it. Because without a rash of these here locally, right now, we may need a larger context to put it in.
I did contact the city, uh, the town of Ocean City and asked for the background on how their ordinance did come about, and I have not had a response yet, so it's, I'm trying to get it.
Clerk, we can get that for you right there, Ms. Kim. Clerk can get it for you.
We appreciate you taking the time to come and speak with us.
If I can just point one more thing out, I'm sorry. In twenty fourteen, then City Council President Jake Day did put forth a stash of trash resolution that was ultimately signed by Mayor James Ierton. So obviously, littering is a, a pet project here of the town of Salisbury. So this is littering, so it does go, go to many things, littering as well as protecting our environment.
You know what I was thinking, you should, for the sake of never having to work, you should come up with the alternative to this. Where's the, where's the, the genius that comes up with the way for you to do this and it doesn't do?
I'll get my chemistry set up.
Right.
I'll create something.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much for listening to me.
Any other items?
On the September fifth work session, I know that Chief Duncan is scheduled to be here, I assume she'll be probably back from, from vacation. I was wondering, we've asked not just a few times in passing, a larger discussion, uh, on right now, the current situation in the city. I, I have some questions for the chief, um, about what, what in terms of the, the Safe Streets Initiative is left. Who's still working, uh, with whom, how well the new interactive thing is going, I think. But I, I, I really, this is, uh, it's just, people who live in my neighborhood are going, what's, you know, what's happening? So if, I know that she's scheduled to be here, and Susan Phillips is here, so if there's any way possible, we could expand that.
We'll talk about the agenda meeting tomorrow.
Just, if you could, just some, if you wanna put it in there with it, I'm sure criminal nuisance legislation will have something to do with the.
Mr. Ray, are there any issues with, with that timing?
No, I, I'll let me make sure she's back, cause she's gone for a little bit. But, uh, no, I, I don't think we mind that at all. We, uh, we could even get into a regular rhythm of, I mean, we're, we're doing these public safety briefings for the general public. Obviously, that's for council too, but we could do a quarterly council, you know, which way are we headed, you know, I mean.
Yeah, look, I mean, I'm just asking, cause it looked really good in June, we were under the one thousand mark for part one. And I, I know the perception, but it boom, it, it's, it's been a boom here in the last, in the last month and a half, and that has people rattled.
No, our numbers, our numbers are further down.
I, I know.
It's, it's slowed since then.
So the question really is gonna be a discussion of violent.
Violent crimes.
That's, that's really where it, where it is.
And, and if we categorize the violent crimes from, you know, aggravated assaults and, um, you know, um, any assault with a weapon, anything like that. It's down, violent crimes are down too, but homicide situation, you know, obviously concerning. And I think, um, I don't know what she would and wouldn't be willing to discuss in an open session. But, uh, I think, I think really good information in an open session would be fine. I mean, there's a lot of information about each of those homicides, the, um, uh, that, that I think is, is telling. And I don't, I don't think even a lot of people know, uh, you know, the day that the gentleman was, uh, stabbed, um, in, in the car. You know, the seven people have been arrested on that. That was one of three domestic violence incidents that, that involved stabbing in the city in the same day, three in a day. So, I mean, there's a lot to talk about, and, and there's a lot to each of those issues. And I, I have no problem with it, I don't think she'd have any problem with talking about the details. You know, we're, uh, now with our new GIS division, there's a lot of mapping, um, that's happening, a lot more than we were able to do before. So I think we can even share a lot of maps. So if she's back September fifth, absolutely. If not, Colonel will be here that day for her, and she can do it the next work session. And if you want us to do it periodically and update, we can do that too.
Well, I, I think in, in, until we see a, a change in the violence crime, maybe a quarterly thing would, would not be a bad idea.
Well, again, I wanna make sure that we're, you know, not mischaracterizing things, violent crime is down.
Yeah.
You know, I'm looking at the numbers, I just pulled them out in front of you.
From, from, uh, from our constituents' point of view, that's the thing that I get asked about all the time.
Sure, and, and.
And I, you know, the rest of it, we know, we know that there's a lot of activity going on, but I think, I think it's important for us to.
Also, really good point, um, Jim, you made about Safe Streets. You know, we reconstituted the Safe Streets team, uh, last month, so we can, we brought that back, so we can talk about.
Are those the officers?
Yes.
Then that's really, and, and I, I can wait till the fifth to talk about it. But the Safe Streets Initiative with all of the people surrounding all of the issues. I, I, I would wanna be interested on whether or not they were still meeting.
No, I know that, I, when I asked Christine the last time, because I was intere-, I was going to those meetings, like, every month, they would have them. But she said the participation was really slack.
It was really slack.
If it takes a, a larger discussion when the chief come back, comes back to put everybody, because I, I, I pulled from my records and honest to God, I didn't know I'd be able to find it, all of the people that participated. And if they're all not still getting in the same room with all the expertise, then if, if you or the council or the chief has the power to bring those people back to the table and say, we really need to know a month and a half before somebody gets out of, comes out of Poplar Hill or comes out of ECI. Because when they come back into the community is the first forty-eight hours of, I'm back here and I'm big and bad. We know that we have worked very hard to pull people off the streets so that cooling off period can happen. And if, if parole and probation and juvenile services and all those people are not in the same room, then maybe collectively, we ought to say out loud, it's time for you to get back in the same.
And you know, and, and, I mean, you just described exactly what frequently the problem comes from. Somebody getting out and right away, there's a problem. And then you, you also know that sometimes those cooling off periods are exactly what prevents a homicide.
That's exactly right.
I mean, you've been there. So the, the other thing that I'd say is that, um, the intent is not to stop having those meetings. But Christine getting hired into a permanent position, uh, didn't help. However, the interviews and background checks are ongoing for the, um, her replacement for the Safe Streets Coordinator. And, uh, that, the timing may be perfect to have this conversation and then bring that person on board and get them to hit the ground running and say, one of the things that we'd like to see improved is, and by the way, let's, one other thing I should mention. We just got, uh, notice that we received Safe, Safe Streets funding again this year, um, and, which is kind of stunning. We're, we're getting it year after year after year, and every year, we think it's the last year we're gonna get it. Cause that was the intent, is, hey, we're, we're only gonna give this to you for so long. And, and I don't know exactly what's happening up at the state of Maryland, um, uh, but.
Cause they don't have an Office of Crime Control.
It's, it exists, and it is, um, not functioning like it used to. You know, there's a lot, there's an issue going on in Annapolis, and I don't know exactly what it is with, related to GOCCP.
Because since this position was more of, like, like you said, was a temporary position, is, is this?
Grant funding.
Grant funding, but is it something that we should, you know, thinking down the road, is this something that we should, we should look to make permanent?
Well, Samir, what I'll tell you, and what I think Jim will tell you, is that every single year, I've looked at it, and I'm guessing you did too, as a, oh, no matter what, even if the funding doesn't come through, this is getting in the budget. And that, you know, that I sent to council, and I'm guessing you, I don't wanna speak for you, but I'm guessing you felt the same way. But we've gotten lucky, we've gotten lucky. So yes, I think everyone at this table, I hope, when budget time comes, if we don't get grant funding for next year, I hope you all consider this as a critical thing. Cause I intend to fund it no matter what in the budget.
Yeah, and that's, but, you know, and that, but I'm, I'm just saying, you know, a future council and mayor may not feel strongly about that. If you get to a period where, hey, violent crime's down, crime is down, so maybe we can just step back. But we don't look at, we're not focusing on, like you said, what happened this summer, who, who's getting out. And not knowing, I mean, I, I can even tell you from a, a personal experience that an individual was released and the family didn't know. And, and this was a serious situation. He was out, he was just released and he wasn't even, his parole officer didn't even know. So, I mean, there, there's a breakdown at the state level of, of communicating and, and knowing who's coming out. You know, so that's, that's, that's an issue that, you know, it's not ours, but we need, it's something we need to talk about.
Well, well, the budget question is as simple as adding it to the position count? Cause the dollars are coming in on, on the revenue side, and the dollars are going out on the expense side. So if we just add the person to a position count and add the job description, um, you know, we can easily change that next year, easily.
I think the thing that's happened more, like Mir says, is that I've called the police chief, someone's called and said, hey, there's something going down behind my house. And it's a task force of some kind, and it takes three days to find out who it was. Because the chief will say, well, it wasn't us, which is okay, I don't care who comes to help me. You know what I mean? Tax dollars are tax dollars, federal, state, whatever. But if, if somebody is not plugging her in, or all those people aren't at the table nowadays going. Because it is very disconcerting to me to have to call somebody back and say, I know nothing, and then call them back the day later. And then Chief Duncan calls me and goes, I'm so sorry that I have to do this to you, but I still don't know who, what that SWAT truck was and those people with headgear on. Whereas it seemed like before, when we'd had those sort of things with the apprehension team, with the state police, that there was always two people from the state police, two people from the county police, two Salisbury guys involved. And somebody would call the mayor and say, just so you know.
And that happens constant.
I know it does, and I, 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 it's, uh.
So if you ever have any issue, I mean, just call me and I'll, I'll figure it out. But, um, but, yeah, I think to the point of getting all the parties at the table, that's what Safe Streets was about. I don't know if it'll exist another year at the state level. I don't know if the funding will still exist. It might still exist and just be called something else or be reoriented. But clearly, you know, all over the US, there, there has been a slight rise in homicides this year. And that's something that, you know, in Maryland, that's true. I mean, you know, we've seen, uh, eighteen homicides in eighteen months in Annapolis. You know, Baltimore spike. So clearly, uh, there's, this is a state, uh, issue that we could gain from if those resources are targeted in a, in a concerted way. Right now, I mean, grateful that we got the money, grateful that we got Spontane, grateful that we've got the team back in place. And oh, by the way, the funding was not the issue with the team, the only reason we didn't have the team in place for a while, um, the Safe Streets team was staffing issue. But now that staffing is back up.
To be honest with you, I think that's a, that's another, that's another update that I need from Barbara Duncan of, of how one point five million was pumped in there, how many years ago, and.
Three years ago, yeah. And, and we're finally back at full staffing. And the reason, and that includes the contingent that's in the, um, in, uh, the academy right now. But we'll be full at the end of this academy class, um, you know, no vacancies.
All right, well, if you'll ask tomorrow during the.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Yeah, we got it, no problem.
Anything else?
Is the picnic still on for Friday?
Give me one.
Summer youth employment for the picnic?
I believe so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm at the board retreat.
Yeah, we're good.
Nothing else? Okay, we're adjourned.